Oh, call to order. So I 11th regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners in Chippewa County. If we could please, in celebration of Commissioner Laurent's stellar job yesterday, would you lead us in pledge?
Sorry. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Here.
Commissioner Laurent?
Here.
Commissioner Savoy? Commissioner Trainer?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here.
Any additional solutions to the agenda? I would entertain a motion then to accept them as.
So move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Name? Passes. Approval of county board minutes from that's from last week.
I make the motion.
And oh, by the way, this will be five A and five B. Sorry. Good motion for five A and five B?
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondents receiving clerk's office, page seven of your packet. There's about a half dozen there.
Motion that they get distributed to where they need to go?
Motion. Support. Motion and support to forward the correspondence to the appropriate place. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public comment? Anybody here who would like to come up and speak? No? Anybody up there, Anthony? Have their hand up?
No one's here for public comment.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Declare public comment closed. Administrator support. Administrator Church.
The regular monthly reports are out there. If you have any questions about the numbers or anything in those reports, let me know.
Make a motion, prove.
We don't have. Yeah, I'm just, I was looking, I was cheating. I was looking ahead at resolutions. We've got quite a few there. Recognition of of home health care and its history. Upcap and public transportation, then tributes for our nurses. And these are all resolutions, so they'll all be a roll call vote, and we will also do each one kind of. Okay. Resolution 2024 recognition profound appreciation Chippewa County Health Department's Home Health Care and Hospice Program.
I move.
Motion and second. Motion and support for resolution 2024 dash 13. Any discussion? I just wanted to thank Karen for all that she did to help keep going, and Kelly, you too. I mean, you all, the whole department, K, everybody in the Health Department, did everything they could to keep it as long as we did. Sad, sad thing, but since COVID, everything's changed, so we'll continue on. Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin or Chairman Martin?
Yes. Motion passes. Resolution 2024, this basically just a housekeeping issue with upcap and other services that they provide to the elderly of the U B.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Support.
And support for resolution 2024 dash 14. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Resolution 2024 dash 15, supporting public transportation for residents of the upper peninsula. I think it's in there, what, state case sixty percent? Believe that's correct, and that is not changing anytime soon, so.
I make the motion.
Motion, support. Motion and support for keeping public transportation attainable and reasonable for people of the U B. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Next, resolution 2024 dash 16, special tribute of Cindy Armstrong for all of her decades of work here in the county. And support for 2024 dash 17 honoring, does it say Cindy? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Next, resolution 2024 dash 17, special tribute honoring Terry Knowles. And again, her decades of work with Chippewa County Health Department.
I'll make that motion.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion?
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Next, resolution 2024 dash 18, special tribute honoring Lenora Reiner.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, support and support for her many years of work. Any discussion? Roll call vote, clerk.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. And last resolution, 2024, Joanne Saunders, and all that she has given to the county and to the Health Department.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, just quickly, because again, I'm new, but just as a whole, for Cindy Armstrong, Terry Knowles, Lenora Reiner Berg, and John Sanders, I just wanted to say, you know, I think on behalf of all of us, we appreciate very much what they've done, and I was just curious, the procedure for these tributes, do we print them like on ice paper and frame them and everything like that?
Okay. No, absolutely. They do a really nice job. Here, we tend to do them, I don't want to say a rough draft, but make sure we have everything right, make sure spellings, make sure everything is correct. And then, yeah, they do a very nice frame with the seal and it's nicely done, as it should be. Thank you.
As long as we're in the discussion, we only did these for people that had more than fifteen years. So you said all of the nurses, but that first resolution that you passed is honoring those ones that just may have had only a few years for Chippewa County.
Thank you. Another reason why we have certification. Thank you. All right. Next. Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Resolution passes. Standing Committee reports building grounds in jail. Commissioner Trainer? Page twenty four.
Regular meeting of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Building Grounds and Jail Legislative Natural Resources and Information Technology Committee was held on Monday, July 1st, 2024. That's Chippewa County Courthouse and Sault Ste. Marie. Chairman Trainer called the meeting on the order at ten a.m. with a quorum present. Additions and approval of the agenda. On motion that was carried, public comments, there was no public comments, legislative and natural resources, no action or informal items, sheriff's storage building update, no action. Animal shelter addition, renovation, update. Committee then reviewed the prior minutes on the current fund balance of Fund 285 animal shelter donations. Donations average about fifty-eight hundred a month, and there's current fund balance of two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Based on prior conversations and input from the committee, the committee discussed options for funding approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars shortage for the project. Project has been all paid for donated funds to date, except for a camera system, which Board of Commissioners approved with a budget amendment. Is moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Savoy, to approve unauthorized with two hundred fifty thousand dollars transfer from the general fund to eighty-five animal shelter donations, and to loan the balance of the project from general fund with no interest to the same fund to be paid back as funds are available. On a voice vote, the motion was carried. Other cedar tree fence, city ordinance, no action.
You need a motion for that, Jim.
Oh, done that last one?
Yep.
Have a motion approved?
Yeah, I didn't know if I'm allowed to make, I'll make the motion.
Yep.
You'll support. You should.
But I move, then, okay, is there support?
And I would so move, and then Justin can.
Okay, I'd so move.
I'll support. Oh, any, any more discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, and this is again, being new, since Commissioner Trainer wasn't there, and I, I mean, the, this is, I guess, something I'd like to explain a little bit. If the committees make, for example, this is a fairly large commitment, but myself and Commissioner Savoy were there, but if there was disagreement amongst the rest of the commission, this is where it would be hashed out, I assume, correct?
But Jim was there.
I'm sorry, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
But even if you want the time to hash it out, if the committee came back split, then when we, when we have our motion support, then we have our, then we could hash out a discussion where we could, we could knock it down, or we could pass it, or we could even table it.
Or if even, if there was, I mean, because there's technically a majority of commissioners at that committee meeting, but if the other two disagreed, and it could flip the other way on such issue, I assume just by deliberation, things like that.
Yeah, conceivably, it certainly could. If there was two of us here that were opposed to it, and one of the two in the committee, even though it came out of committee, yeah, we can knock it down three to two. I don't think we've ever seen that happen with us.
Yeah, it's happened before, because when you guys get into discussion, you might amend the motion, or you might table it until you have more information, so, but now would be the time when you have it on the table to discuss.
We have tabled frequently, but we usually don't reverse the committee, but it certainly could happen, and I'm sure in your institutional memory, it has happened. We're just, I don't know.
Well, I support my own.
We get long, so.
They have a second thoughts there.
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure that, that no one else feels railroaded here.
All right, very good. Any, any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Other with no action was the cedar trees. Pointing stairs courthouse, no action. Windows, east side metal, no action. Information technology bid summary, building security and access control system. And that that motion to approve. Get the system.
I'll make that motion. If that's appropriate.
No, I would so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Straighten me out.
Jim?
I'd so move.
Now.
I support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I haven't been drinking tonight either.
All right.
The record show.
I did have a Pepsi, though.
Oh, you got sugar buzzed.
Diet.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to help you out. Okay, shall we?
It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve a little bit of shoreline, shoreline power service written amounts of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty to seek the M M R M A wrap grants totaling seventy-five thousand, one hundred dollars to make a budget amendment to complete the project in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Just for clarification, so you're just gonna go with the second one, Steve?
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
All right.
Ready to roll again?
Yep, we are ready.
Twenty twenty-four update, no action. Future needs twenty-five, twenty-six, no action. Committee and chairman comments, committee thanked the information technology, Brian Bartless and Anthony Zaccick and the administration for looking in the future and making them aware of upcoming project for F Y twenty-five and F Y twenty-six. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, seconded by Commissioner Trainer to adjourn the meeting on a voice vote, and the motion was carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. For comments and adjournment. Any discussion?
Just add again for the public. The all of the items that, that were mentioned as no action, there's a tremendous amount of administrative work done, and we talked a lot, but, so there's things getting done, or they'll be coming up to the next, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that that was clarified.
That's, that's good, and I was just gonna add to that, one of the reasons why the county has been successful financially is because Kelly and others, the department chairs, have been proactive. I mean, they're giving us heads up on stuff in twenty-five and twenty-six. So that's helpful for us, so we don't get blindsided. We think, oh, we got the budget done, then it's like, boom, we get hit with something like this, and that, that's far less likely to happen, especially leadership we have right now. That was a compliment, Minister of Church. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Trainer.
Was that the motion to accept the minutes?
No, that was, yeah, that was, okay, that was, because we had the discussion about.
Just making.
That stuff. Okay.
So then we're done on that.
Next, you are done. Chairman Lawrence? I'm sorry.
Over there. Yeah.
You've got finance, Gretchen. You've got finance?
Yes. Regular meeting, finance, claims and accounts was met Tuesday, July ninth, four thirty P M. Members President Jim Martin, Jim Trainer, Damon Lorenz, Justin Nepper. Moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the agenda as presented on a voice vote, motion carried, I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There was no public comment offered. The committee reviewed the treasurer's investment reports, visa billing and travel requests, no action required. Health Department Quality Assurance Program Improvement Report, hospice, private duty, home health. Committee received and reviewed programming data for hospice, home health, and home care private duty for the period of March twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-four. It's quarterly review by the Board Oversight, Health Department, by Oversight, Health Department. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Martin to acknowledge the oversight for Q A P I monitoring for home health, home care, private duty, and hospice services provided by the C C H D between March twenty-four through June twenty-fourth. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Information Systems bid summary for network shortage, storage solutions. Committee reviewed the bid summary for the chosen Windows N A S server for the S A N solutions, as the S A N solutions were too costly. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize the Windows N A S server project, including the three-year software assurance at the cost of thirty-five thousand, nineteen dollars, forty-two cents from Avalon Technologies, and applying for the nineteen thousand dollar M M M R A wrap grant to help cover the costs. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support, and just a side note here, it might look that that was not the lowest bidder, but that was the lowest bidder that had everything that was required in, in that package there. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Information Systems, purchase and budget scanner, and budget scanners for the P A's office, one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, eighty-four cents. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize purchase and budget for recall F I eighty forty scanners from Insight at the cost of one thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents that are compatible with the new prosecutor software as presented on a voice vote, motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
Just a quick clarification, because I can't recall. Was that seventeen hundred thirty-seven per unit or total?
That's total.
And everything can talk to each other, right?
That's the plan.
Yeah. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Information Systems, policy five oh eight, email automatic forwarding policy. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the new policy, number five oh eight, email automatic forwarding policy as presented on a voice vote, motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Public defender, conflict attorney, legal services agreement for Gretchen Stankowitz. Did I pronounce that right? Pretty closely. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve and authorize a new legal services contract for Gretchen Stankowitz, starting June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as presented on a voice vote, motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support on training and funds. Any discussion?
As a reminder, it's only through that date, because you'll have new contracts coming through, through the M I D C that are starting October one, so she's not just working for a short period of time. We have to renew that contract October first.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services, O E S, training funds expenses of twenty-five hundred dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize twenty-five hundred dollars from the Fund two eleven to be utilized for electric vehicles and lithium battery fires. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion on the training on how to put out fires? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Service, release R F P for dual band pagers. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the release of the R F P for dual band pagers as presented on a voice vote, motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion. And support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sheriff's Office Storage Building, order mezzanine choice, cost of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize the mezzanine changes as presented for two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars on a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion about the change order? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Veterans Affairs, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, County Veteran Services Fund Grant, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize fiscal year twenty-five County Veteran Services Fund Grant, seeking seven, eight, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars for Chippewa County Veteran Services as presented. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support on Veteran service fund grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Administration, M E D C, C D B G, annual reporting. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Nepper to acknowledge and accept, and, and accept the program income certification, having received thirty-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars, forty-seven cents during the period from July one of twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-four, noting the monies would be transferred to the general fund and acknowledged, acknowledging the single audit certification as presented on a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Motion and support for, quite frankly, Christmas in July, thirty-one thousand moved into the general fund with no restrictions. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finance Claims and Accounts, June County and Health Department. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to recommend the approval of June County bills and payroll, general claims, four hundred ten thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, ten cents. Other fund claims, big number. Payroll, Health Department claims and payroll, total claims of two million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars, forty-seven cents. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I so move.
Support. Motion and support to pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Committee comments, other than what we've already had?
Commissioner Trainer gave a brief update on the animal shelter and sheriff's storage building projects. Commissioner Martin voiced an accolade that complimented the Chippewa County Health Department for continuing the home health and hospice as long as he did. He got some nice comments from out of the area. Commissioner Martin also spoke about a potential veterans fishing license waiver for the upcoming Veterans Fishing Day. No additional comments were offered from the chairman. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Nepper to adjourn at four fifty P M. And I so move.
Support. Motion and support to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To pass. All right. Back to us, the number eleven in your packet, report on meetings and board representation and general comments, especially if you wanted to expand on anything from yesterday's workshop.
Although we had a good workshop yesterday, I think it was a good opportunity to engage with some people that perhaps we didn't know had stake in it. I would like to point out that I think one, one group that we have not reached out to yet would be the religious community. That's often the first and last place these people go to begin to deal with their issues, and then how to get back into society. So I think that's one, also one leg we need to consider when we're, when we're looking into this, both, both to introduce them into the, into the programming and then reintegration into society.
Good point, and I would include the Salvation Army in that also, as a service organization where many of these people go is, is a safe place.
I would just say, I, I thought it was a very healthy discourse and probably good, good, oh, what's a good learning time for us just to, as, as we interact with the community on very touchy and difficult subjects, I think it was, there's a lot of interest, a lot of willingness to help.
Mr. Trainer?
I'd say, talk about the animal shelter.
If you'd like.
Went out there this afternoon, went through all the additions. They were booming on the sheriff's department building. They got the trusses all the way on the top of it. By the end of next week, I'll bet you they have her boxed in.
That'd be a good day.
And the old part of the shelter, they've got the inside of that gutted out, and they're already putting walls up for
where the animals will go once they've had surgery and stuff, because they'll no longer be shipped out of the building.
I drove by yesterday. They have been busy, for sure.
Really going.
That's good. Now, what about the, the funding shortage? I had a question about that. Looks to be a, a big hole there?
No.
Did I miss something?
It was just, something was missing. I just had to add to it to finish that part of it up, and it'll get paid back out of the donations going into.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was driving at, because they were like two fifty behind or something, but that money will come.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've got regular people that donate big to them, so it'll cover it.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
They're actually a little bit ahead from when we started a year ago. That's why I included the minutes from a year ago. They were about three eighty and, you know, under budget, and now we're down to three fifty, but that includes some of the stuff that's still being paid for during that, so they have made up some ground on that, and they just don't know when they're going to get, you know, a big, big donation, so. We always knew they were probably going to be a little bit short. We just needed to decide how we were going to take care of it, so that we didn't have a special fund that was upside down.
As you say, we have the flexibility to cover that until they pass back. Yes.
And on that topic, now that we've approved, just was curious how, how that news is conveyed to the animal shelter that, that the county is putting in two hundred fifty thousand and if you already called her.
I already talked to Holly, and then she'll get a copy of the minutes as well, so she'll be able to share that with her people that she talks to that support her so well.
I was hoping they were generally happy with that.
Yes.
Well. Thanks. Meeting yesterday was very informative, very positive. I think, yeah, we use the best and brightest ideas. We find out what works, what's worked here, and we'll make it a better place. I would then take a motion for adjournment.
I make that motion.
For, just now. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.